Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to this work session. Before we get started on the budget, though, I do have a proclamation to present to celebrate National Service Recognition Day. So I have invited two AmeriCorps volunteers with the Washington County Community Mediation Center, Sarah and Nell, and I'm going to ask them to come up, and DJ Allen, program manager there, if you want to come up as well. So this day is really meant to recognize all the people engaged in national service. It's really a volunteer effort, and AmeriCorps is at the heart of it. I'm going to have Nell and Sarah talk a little bit about what AmeriCorps is. But this is a proclamation for National Service Recognition Day, whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges; and whereas the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs; and whereas national service participants address the most pressing challenges facing our cities, from educating students for jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families, to providing health services and helping communities recover from natural disasters; and whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve; and whereas national service participants serve in more than 60,000 locations across the country, bolstering civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being; and whereas national service participants increase the impact of organizations, they serve with both their direct service and by recruiting and managing millions of additional volunteers; and whereas national service participants represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas national service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them for their future endeavors. Now, therefore, I, David Geisbert, the mayor of the city of Hagerstown, Maryland, do hereby proclaim April 28th, 2015, as National Service Recognition Day in Hagerstown, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city, and to thank those who serve and to find ways to give back to their communities. So Sarah and Nell, AmeriCorps volunteers, I'm going to present this proclamation to you, if you would like to take that. And would you like to say a few words about what AmeriCorps is and your experience in AmeriCorps?
Do you want both of us?
You first.
Okay. So basically, my experience with AmeriCorps is I graduated school and decided to spend a year doing, like, community service. And so through AmeriCorps, you work with local organizations and the community to help serve people, and also, you know, encourage people within the community to volunteer at those organizations as well.
Great. And let me have this for a second. Just to let you know, I did basic mediation training with Nell here in 2011. She wa-- I don't-- well, you weren't even 18 years old then, were you?
I just turned 18.
You just turned 18. She is really one of the best mediators. She's really excellent, and the Mediation Center, the community, is lucky to have her. So, Nell, you want to talk about your experience?
Sure. Well, I'll talk about mediation a little bit. My experience is, you know, breaking the long, grueling hours that are tasked to us in the world of mediation, trying to get people in and help them resolve their issues and their problems that they're having. A lot of the work that I specifically do for AmeriCorps is actually in the prisons here in Hagerstown, kind of helping inmates soon to be released reconnect with their families and make plans about what-- how things are going to go and try to, you know, forge a better path coming out of prison. So that's been really rewarding, and I'm excited to have had that opportunity.
Very nice. Thank you very much for all your service, and keep up the good work. The Mediation Center has certainly helped the city directly when it came to getting our ice rink back on track, and also whenever we have various issues come up with neighbor disputes and other things, it's a great resource to be able to refer folks to. So keep up the good work. Thank you so much. Oh, absolutely. All right. One more. Do you need a picture? One more? Do you need DJ a picture? Okay. Thank you again. Thanks for meeting here. Nice to meet you. All right. We do have a budget review. I do want to say, you know, we constitutionally, if you will, are required to pass this budget by May 31st. So as we continue this conversation, I certainly don't think we'll be meeting for two hours tonight, but we can always schedule more work sessions between now and the time we need to pass this budget. So if we don't resolve everything tonight in this hour, we will certainly be able to have it on future work sessions and special work sessions as well. So I'm going to turn it over to the city administrator.
Very briefly, as Michelle gets settled in, I think she's got some, whether you call it a plan or a list of adjustments reflecting the mayor and council's discussion at your work session on the 21st. There may be some additional ideas from mayor and council, but I think what she'll outline for you will help make up the difference if the mayor and council choose to reduce or eliminate the property tax rate increase. And she also has department heads here to help explain adjustments, either that they're recommending or to help flesh out ones that were recommended last week, and for them to participate in that.
So tonight, I think we'll just start off based on feedback that we received last week. We understand that at this time, there is interest to explore alternate options and ways to balance our fiscal year 16 budget. And by alternate options, I mean an alternate solution versus what's in the proposed budget, which included a 5 cent tax rate increase for real property. As we mentioned in the budget message and in the document, there is a need for the city of Hagerstown to strengthen our revenue source and our revenue base. Last week, we received a listing of potential adjustments from council member Brubaker. Thank you. And we, while we have been working through those, it is our goal, the department heads, myself, hopefully Bruce is our city administrator, to limit the city's financial duress in the future and provide resources to our departments and leaders. Many of the expenditure reductions on this list are very manageable. At this time, however, I would like to ask consideration of a 1.5 cent property rate increase for next year. The 1.5 cent tax rate increase would generate approximately $361,500 and would go towards some of the other items to get back to the 1.2 that we would need.
Well, why don't you go through your whole list so that they see how the numbers play out? Because I think that'll give the mayor and council the full picture.
Certainly. And I can go through the numbers, or I can go ahead and ask the managers to come up one by one.
Go through your numbers so they see how you're attempting to help them balance the budget.
Exactly. So on the listing that we received, item number three is a reduction in CIP general fund monies, or what we commonly refer to as PGO. So the recommendation was to find $100,000 in cuts, and so far, we identified four projects for a total of $110,000 in cuts. And again, this, the approach that we're going to walk through tonight is concentrating specifically on fiscal year 16. The next item on the list is a reduction in economic redevelopment contributions. And in our proposed budget, we were proposing to do $200,000 from the general fund to the economic redevelopment fund to help fund and carry out certain incentives and programs that were already in place. The potential adjustment here is $100,000, and we have worked diligently with the department and have found ways to actually reduce the monies from the general fund, $100,000 for that. So at that point, we're at $210,000.
So that means we're only going to be contributing $100,000?
So the general fund would only be putting forth $100,000. And with, we'll ask John to come up a little bit later, and we'll walk through. It's easier at that point if we can go into the budget and look at the impact on the economic redevelopment fund. But we have a very good plan, still allows us to do most, all of our programs and services that we had within that fund. The next item on the list is a reduction in police overtime for $200,000. Once we invite chief to the table, we're going to find that, yes, we can, within HPD, contribute and adjust and reduce $200,000 in expenditure cuts. All of those reductions are not, however, going to be in overtime.
Yeah. Because hopefully the chief comes up here, because I swear, nobody has an eye-opener as to where the overtime is actually being paid.
Right.
Yeah.
And he has those numbers, and he'll walk through all of them with us.
Oh, yeah. It's amazing. You're a number man, Marty. And it was an eye-opener as to monies that are being paid for police overtime that's not coming from the city.
Yes.
It's from other entities. Yes.
And we'll hear about those. And again, this listing was, is a great place for all of us to start, and a good place just to make sure that we continue to get a balanced budget, that we're able to meet our May 31st deadline, we're able to provide the resources that we all wish to provide to the departments and the leaders, maintaining all of our current programs and services for fiscal year 16. So this was a lot of hard work by everybody. The next item on this list is a reduction in fire overtime of $100,000. Again, we have identified about $70,000 in reductions. And again, that's not necessarily going to be in overtime or in anything that's within the operational budget in the proposed budget at this time. I'm going to skip over the fund balance reserve, only because it, at this, at this time, it's not part of the reductions that we, that I have identified. I think that we can find a way to balance the budget for fiscal year 16 without touching our fund balance reserve and the general fund. The last item on the list is maintaining police and fire retirement contribution at fiscal year 15 actual level. So what I did for this, I went back and I took a list, a look, and we did a review. So at the end of fiscal year 15, we will have contributed from the employer, just briefly, a little bit over 1.2 million dollars. So in an effort to keep our contribution next year at 1.2 million, looking at what we have right now calculated and estimated in salaries, we would be looking at approximately a 12.3% contribution from the employer. And in comparison, Sebus, when he were here a few months ago, actually recommended that the employer contribution be 13.71%. So by taking it to the 12.3%, we feel that we can get to the $125,000 reduction there. So for five of those items that we just walked through, that's approximately $605,000. If we're able to do a 1.5 cent tax rate increase, that gets us an additional $361,500. That would leave us about $233,000 of further expenditure reductions in order to balance the fiscal year 16 budget. And I feel confident I can find that amount for you. Yes?
Tell us about the following year.
I-
Based on, based on what you've suggested here.
Many of the items that I suggested and that we've looked at for fiscal year 16 may or may not recur in fiscal year 17.
So is the implication another tax increase?
I think the implic- I think the implication is that we're going to, we're going to take a step back from looking at this two-year plan, just, just in order to get through the next two and a half, three weeks. July 1, we're all back at this table, coming up with our new city administrator, with this council, with department heads, a plan for fiscal year 17. And that we do that starting in July, so that next year, we know clearly where we need to be when we bring back fiscal year 17 budget balanced for this group.
I think really what Don is getting is, basically what you're saying is, next year we'll have a bigger hole to face. If we don't get to the level of funding that's being recommended by the city administrator, we're going to be setting up our new city administrator for even tougher challenges in next fiscal year's budget.
Yes.
That, but that makes, in part, that makes the assumption that none of these are recurring savings that we could achieve. In other words, the hole next year is reflected right now on the recurring hole we're creating with the proposed budget. Some of these items, probably at least half, are items of a recurring nature that you would be able to adjust as well down next year.
I wouldn't put them in the column if I don't think we could do it two years ago. That's my opinion. I think we can do it two years ago.
But there's also some pretty-
The gap is where I failed, I had to be determined at the bottom, and I failed to put in the amount to make up the 5 cents. So we have another double this amount, roughly.
Right.
You know, the city-
Next year.
The city administrator would face next year under my proposal.
There's some huge assumptions on your proposal, too, which is that, that no major pay adjustments will occur in the next year or two.
Well, for 17, we have to face the music. We can't, if we're going to raise, not going to raise taxes, that's what we have to do.
But we're also going to be entering into negotiations with employee groups-
That's right.
-that will expect a raise. I mean, let's face it, that's going to be what they're coming to the table expecting.
That's right. We will. That's exactly right.
So that's part of the conversation.
We can't-
It's a big assumption, I guess, is what I'm pointing out.
No, no. It's not an assumption. It's a policy, the way I feel. I don't feel the city can go any higher on asking its citizens to support the city. We've got to keep it beyond, you know, last year, the 11 cents took us more than what we lost in the tax base. I don't think, and I said this last year, I'm being totally consistent year to year, we can't go any farther. So either we start with this, and the city administrator has two things to plan for: more cuts in 17 to avoid a tax increase, and a standby Plan B if the tax base, which we'll know by, I think, January 17, doesn't come up, then we've got to have a Plan B, a drastic Plan B. But again, we can't just, to me, raise taxes infinitely to meet demands, not necessarily needs, but demands, without jeopardizing really our tax base for a long time. Because I think, and the second thing is, it would appear to me, if I was a citizen, that we're just going to raise taxes to meet problems, not try to make other budget adjustments. And I think, you know, raising taxes 21 cents in, in three years, which is what this proposes, I think just says that. So, but, but I think these are sustainable, again, with the two problems, two caveats. Next year, the, the new city administrator has to find that 5 cents and have a Plan B in case the tax base fails. But we won't be any better off if we pass the tax increases. We'll still have a, we'll still have a major situation. It'll be over a dollar.
There, for me, there's at least two items that I would include in the conversation. And the first you've already addressed was just the penny and the half. And the reason I say that, and I think I've said this a number of times, even before this body took office, you know, and we were asked these questions, was the 12 and 1/2 cents. I think that was the, the rate differential. And, and, you know, if I were in your seat at that time, I wouldn't have made that same adjustment. And that's, that's, you know, it's just a difference of, of opinion on, on the matter. But I don't think that any other municipality in the county made that adjustment, and I don't think that, frankly, the budget was sustainable with it, nor, nor was the credit ever given that was due for doing that during, during that economic climate. So, you know, sort of a give and take. On one hand, I'm saying, you know, that was great to do it, and on the other, I'm saying it wasn't fiscally reasonable to, to sustain. So that's fine for me, that penny and a half, because I think that gets you at least back to square run for that period. Setting aside, you know, what you've lost in, in assessment over that, that time, I don't know that figure. And so I don't equate that 11 plus the 1 and 1/2 to 12 and 1/2 to that process of loss as much as I do just, you know, eating all of that, that cost for the differential. And the second that I would be finding entering into the conversation is the positions in the Economic Development Department. Clearly, there, there will be some movement in, in that department over the next couple of months, and I would, I would like to have a conversation about the structure of those, that department and, and the number of personnel.
That's really number two on this chart. That, that's actually number two. I couldn't say it last week. You know, I, I knew, I knew stuff that I couldn't say last week.
Yeah.
So that's actually number two. I'm saying the city administrator's going to have to keep the current structure with an acting situation, reorganize or something, but I think that position being held open now, there might be other ways. We, we could choose to add even more labs, but that, but I just couldn't say it last week.
Well, I do think, I just want to-
It's been announced now, right?
I just want to make this point, because I think when, when the previous council had to make tough decisions about reorganizing the government, I think it did a really fine thing in putting under one directorship all those previously scattered departments. And I think what that has done internally and externally has made the city stronger operationally. And I think that to, again, this goes back to hiring a new city administrator and then not allowing that person to find their person to lead that department, I think would really set the city back, in my opinion, because I think it's become a much more efficient operation. The left hand knows what the right hand's doing when it comes to community and economic.
I disagree with that one.
I carefully did not say eliminate the position. I said-
I'm just putting that out there. I think we should-
I said, we need to get by. We added several positions in that department over the last few years, and I think we need to hold back on it. And I think one of the strong professionals needs to be enacting, would be my opinion. Now, if the city administrator can genuinely find the 130,000 another way in that department, all right. I'm just saying, that's the way I, I would think of approaching it. Somebody's got to do, there's got to, got to be a reshuffling of duties for at least two years. Well, how we go through these very hard times? So I'm not saying you have to break up the department. But again, the city administrator might want to do it a different way.
Right. I seriously doubt the new administrator would want to have five times, five more people as direct reports, though.
And I'm not recommending that.
I'm just putting that out there.
We need to hold that position, or promote someone and hold that position open, or reshuffle things. It's a place, it's, it's really a nice to have, but-
Are there other-
And if we were having enormous increases in our tax base and had enormous number of projects going, but we don't, we do not.
What other, I mean, in terms of increasing position laps, any other ideas of where that would occur?
No, but I put that in there for that position. I mean, we can go through if, if the people-
I mean, that would be, I guess, something I explore, but I can't, I mean, besides number one, which I'm assuming the finance director at the request of the public works director has requested that item stay in there, because they've gone for many years, my understanding, without that position.
And I think at this time, what we wanted to do, what we said and committed to do last week, we received, we received a list, it's a very good list, and it, it took, I'm sure, a great deal of time and effort to do that, and we are appreciative. And we've worked through that, and what we said at that time was that we would invite, you know, chief back so he could walk through his numbers and walk through his overtime and discuss those items, like how much is court-driven overtime. We said we would bring back the, the people who were most impacted individually for these individual items.
Okay, well, let's do that.
So I, I-
Can I just ask you a question?
Certainly.
I just want to clarify a couple things. One, my understanding, if I'm reading things right and if I'm listening to questions, is a 1.5 cent tax increase essentially puts us back to our 20, 2010. Is that correct combined? And that's section three, page six, is where the-
As it applies specifically to the differential.
That's exactly what I'm talking about. So we would essentially be at the same combined tax rate as we were in 2010.
That's what I heard. That's what I heard.
Well, I just, I just want to make sure. I mean, that, no, that's what I heard, too, and I want to make sure, and I, and I'm not as good at the math, and it, that appears to be-
It's still that number, right? It's still 12 and 1/2. The county didn't change that.
The county tax offset's 12 and 1/2 cents.
So it looks like our tax rate would be similar to what it was five years ago with the 1.5 cent tax increase, the combined tax rate, which we all understand what that means. I appreciate Martin's approach, however, I've never thought that it was realistic to believe that we could cut the overtimes in the departments. It's, it's a goal to try to achieve, but it's also been something that, that I've never seen us be able to do, and I would be afraid to base a budget on that. And I'll tell you now, if the staff has come up with a method for a, bringing us back to a level that this community was five years ago, without going into the reserve fund, I would be supportive of that type of approach.
But we haven't heard that.
No, we're on a hearing now.
And Lou, the salaries have increased a lot since then, so that makes it all the more difficult.
Well, we have positions that came in here when the past council ended up eliminating 55 positions. We have 20-some that are still on the books as being not funded, but yet, whatever. But yet, there was 20-some of new hires and new positions making new money, better money than what had left. So it's a matter of looking at all of this, and that's what I want to see. Okay? I want to see, okay, what we've got in economic development as to where we're going to go down that list.
Apologize.
I was wondering where that was coming from.
It's from Lou.
From this line. Trying to find some happy news.
He didn't want me to speak.
Trying to find some happy news. Turn on the music.
Actually trying to turn it off.
Could we at least give Eric a chance to explain his position? You may choose not to fund it. It's a position he asked for starting in 2012. We just thought we had to give him a chance to explain it.
Absolutely.
And then if he chooses to not fund it, we'll move on from there.
Sure. Little history on that. You're right, it's been a little while. I actually got hired in August of 1999 as the Assistant Director of Public Works. A year almost to the day, I was actually promoted to Director of Public Works, and since that time, there has not been-
No more assistant.
No more assistant, no. So it's been 15 years, actually. Public Works has also dealt with probably largest percentage of vacancies. We've had five vacancies. We have, right now, 31 full-time employees, management, and union personnel. And probably for the last five or six years, we've started vacating and holding positions vacant. We currently have five unfunded positions. So it's been a while since we've had assistants in that. Now, Public Works was a little different when I came in. We used to have parks, and then in early 2000, I think it was 2002 or 2003, parks ended eventually under engineering, but we picked up parking. So we're still a pretty large department. We handle a whole lot of different things. Basically, it's me, and I have four, four supervisors report directly below me, and then we have union personnel. So there's not a lot of hierarchy. There's me and four guys, basically, that run all that. The idea of this position is to help with our operational and to do what I used to do when I got hired, which was to support the field personnel and what they do and how they plan and how they schedule. When one of my supervisors are off, I'm the one that covers for them, whether they're off for a day or two, you know, a day or two is not a problem, but when they're off for a couple of weeks, I'm the one that has to step in and manage those operations. So I'm very hands-on with our, with our operations in the field, because there simply isn't enough staff to handle that. So a number of years ago, I talked to Bruce, and we talked about trying to strengthen the department in that manner by hiring another person below me to help with the operations. And we brought that to council. We've actually talked in here a couple of times. It's been well-supported. Again, it's always been a matter of, of finances. So, and this obviously is not the best time. Timing's not great, but I'm not sure it ever is good. But that's, that's where we stand with that position.
Any questions?
No, I just have a comment. I know that Public Works, as stressed as it is, as far as not having enough laborers on the street, wherever, street, fields, wherever, I just, I can't- I can't see funding the position now. I think that if there's need, there's need down in that lower end to be able to get done what we need to get done. And Eric, believe me, I've gone to lengths, okay, in trying to figure it out and to work it out in my brain. And I know that Public Works has suffered. There's a lot of departments that have suffered with the lower end of the money hole. And that's, I can't do it. I can't say yeah to it because I just feel that the need is there and we're not going to do that. Then why should we put another one in a place that's going to be again in how many digits as far as being paid? And not, not now, not now. And you know what? I normally don't say anything when it comes to budget. But I'm going to tell you, this one here is just like my pocketbook and it's really, really, really tight.
I understand that. I understand that. I won't say more than more than anybody at this table, but I understand. I've I've dealt with tight budgets.
Oh, I know that. I know that, but I'm letting you know why I've taken the stand, okay?
Understandable. The, and there's nothing in Public Works more to cut. I'm I'm obviously have less money today than I did last year or even two years or three years ago.
You know, if there was anything, I would rather see more laborers than to have a supervisor's position. Because the need is there. I personally feel the need is there, and that's my opinion.
Yeah, my only comment is that is typically you want a supervisor to to manage probably no more than, we'll say, six people. I mean, if you if you do any kind of management training, they'll tell you four to five people, maybe six. Dale supervises, I believe, ten full time staff plus part timers. Eric supervises, I think of ten or eleven full time staff. Scott now supervises four or five other employees now. Jason, the parking's the only one that has only one full time, but he has nine part timers. So all my staff are probably more than double the people they should manage. Hence the reason we need more management at this time and not fewer. And that's that's why I'm.
I know, I just, I I'm for one saying no to it, but that's.
Understood?
Eric, what's your? Do you have any any funded vacancies right now?
Funded vacancies?
Yeah.
No.
No?
Well, no, I shouldn't say. I do have I have one vacancy in our, as a mechanic. And we just made an offer and we'll have that employee starting in mid May. But another employee that's actually going to retire at the end of June, another mechanic, unfortunately. And we're hoping to extend an offer soon if nobody internally applies for the job, so.
What's your turnover rate? How many, how many people do you on average lose each year?
Very few. It's not very often we do. This year's been unusual. We lost, Al Cool retired at the end of December. He was probably our first retirement and and Steve Bone was another one. He was a, he was an early retirement, totally unexpected. But it'd been years before somebody had actually retired or left the department. It's been a while.
Now, among your responsibilities is snow, right?
Correct.
Clearly, that impacts, I would think, overtime, which we've talked about a little bit.
Correct.
Do you have any sense of what the overtime you have to pay in your department for for the 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 snow event this winter was?
For this winter? No, I don't have that in front of me, but I can certainly get that because we track all that.
Yeah, I'm sure you do.
But again, it it depends on when.
Sense at all what that was? Ten thousand dollars, fifty thousand, a hundred thousand?
I think usually on average our overtime for the entire year for events and snow is somewhere around ninety to a hundred thousand dollars. And the events would be like Blues, August River Fest, Mummer's Parade. Most of the, most of other events we handle, we try to handle during the week. Snow, again, is when it comes, when it comes.
Okay.
So out of the total Public Works budget for proposed fiscal year sixteen, overtime is two hundred and twenty five thousand out of total expenditure seven point four. So to to give you that idea, but again, that two hundred and twenty five includes a multitude of things and not just the snow.
Yeah, I understand.
Sorry, so maybe the hundred thousand that was over for snow, yeah. But we we were diligently not having.
People like their sinkholes fixed as well.
Yes.
Things like that.
Correct. We only spend overtime when it's absolutely necessary.
Yeah, okay. If 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 you had to take a cut of some kind, what's your alternatives? Suppose you had to cut a hundred thousand out of there, what's your alternatives?
The only alternative I can think of is some CIP project, which we've already delayed purchasing certain vehicles. It just delays them further. But when you're hiring personnel, whether it's a field personnel or management, it's an ongoing expense. So all you can do is keep cutting and cutting and cutting, so, you know, on those other expenses. It's not something you can cut this year to fund it for this year. You have to think about next year, next year, and it goes on down the line, so.
But that's what I said, if we're not hiring laborers, then I can't see the need, you know. And even though there's, you're saying that, and I and I believe you, that they have more men than they can manage, men or women. I still think that it's just a position that doesn't have to.
The CIPs, if you look in the CIP book, Public Works doesn't have a lot of CIPs and the biggest CIP typically is is vehicles. Because we just simply have, you know, vehicles that cost a lot of money. A street sweeper is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A dump truck is a hundred and fifty thousand. So, you know, a couple of vehicles, all of a sudden, you're expending a lot of money. But as you said, snow is one of our, one of our big things. We got to have, we have to have this type of vehicles, so. There's not a whole lot of, a lot of that stuff we do is so much on maintenance. We're buying mulch and gravel, blacktop and concrete and things like that. There's just not a lot there to cut. And when you got to have it, you got to have it, so.
So you're, what you're saying, I think, is you're about as lean as you can possibly go.
I think we are.
Without some fairly serious repercussions.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you for.
All right.
Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Eric, next time you appear in front of us, bring Sandy Claus with you.
Maybe next.
I'm 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 being, trying to be funny. Guy that works miracles.
Would you like the police chief to explain the offsets to the, his suggestions in lieu of overtime reductions?
Chief, back there?
He's he's coming. He's working his way up.
He's saying, oh my. I think he's tired today.
I agree.
No problems. All right.
Good evening.
Pretty nice.
Couple handouts to pass.
Chief, while those are going around, do you want to update everybody on the current situation in Baltimore? Our role in that? I know you have communicated with us earlier in the day, but do you mind touching on that?
Sure. Earlier today, we sent fifteen officers. We sent thirteen officers and two supervisors along with them down to Baltimore in response to the. Emergency situations happened there. It was at the request of the Baltimore Police and the state police that are handling that incident. And so our officers are down there now. And we'll be having some relief officers going down there and exchanging with them. So I don't anticipate having any more than fifteen there for the, for the period of time. I can't say for the duration because I don't know how long it's going to last, but we'll at least commit for the next day or so.
Great. Thank you for that update.
So, Mr. Mayor, as Michelle had talked about, I took a look at our budget, specifically our overtime. And I have some more of a data sheet here to go over. But the the highlights of that, and I can I can get into line by line, as I know Councilman Nye is interested in that.
Oh, no, I haven't. The other ones are going to be, if they don't know it.
It's, so we specifically, we took a look at our budget. The answer is we can hit two hundred thousand this year. We can reduce two hundred thousand out of our budget and maintain operations. So I can hit that number. The bad news is it's not all out of operations and it's not all out of overtime. So I took a look at our overtime, our operations and some CIP projects, packaged that together to reach the two hundred thousand. So in order to break that down, since overtime is the most difficult to kind of dig through, the other three are are pretty simple. We're going to reduce our fuel consumption, which is, we project a little high, so we have some room there. And reduce our camera CIP by some and also our defer some radio purchases. We'll still have enough to get ourselves through. We just won't begin the full scale replacement. So we'll still have enough to outfit our cars and replace radios for the officers, so no impact to operations there. But it could just defer some costs there in the future.
The cameras, what are they?
The cameras are the street crime cameras replacing the cameras downtown that we budgeted.
Have we even gotten to the point that we have replacement yet and how? I mean, I'm trying to catch up on this and it's like, okay, I'm just not getting there.
Sure. Last fall, council approved initial block of money for, I believe it was eleven cameras.
Yeah.
And so those are out and a lot of them have been replaced. This hundred and fifty thousand that we'd originally budgeted, we've reduced that to, I've reduced, proposed it to a hundred thousand, so we reduced it by fifty thousand. Will still get us a a large number of cameras to replace this year. We'll just replace our critical ones and kind of keep our our main core.
Yeah, yeah.
Or it does not, this doesn't affect affect any other projects like the rail trail. That has its own, I'm sorry, the walking trail, that has its own budget.
Well, we don't even know where we're at with that one yet.
Right. So this would, it would still allow for a hundred thousand dollars to replace crime cameras in the downtown Jonathan Street. That's our main areas where we have cameras. And still free up enough to move around to the different neighborhoods to, so some impact, but not not. I mean, we're building off of nothing. We had nothing last year. Council asked for us to put some in there, so we're going from nothing up to a hundred thousand. So we're in good shape there with cameras, I think.
Well, I just need to have the discussion because I, you know, I'm. There's more and more that I'm hearing that's not in operation and that's why I need to know where the new cameras, you know, what all of this is, but it doesn't matter. Go ahead.
Sure. So specifically at overtime, I took a look at that. I have a data sheet for those that are really interested in numbers. But the highlights are simply this, we are reimbursables. I I took a look at our budget. It's around seven hundred thousand dollars. I'll use some round numbers. And half of that is either locked up in contractual things for a hundred and eighty thousand of that. So that would be a payment for holidays, payment for roll call, overtime associated with twelve hour days. That's all in contractual. K nine care is a pretty high number. Each K nine officer gets paid every day they're off to take care of their dog. All those things add up, so the contractual obligations are around a hundred and eighty thousand of that seven hundred.
Okay, so explain contractual comes out of where?
Everything comes out of overtime and that's.
Now, it's overtime, I know that, but does that's come out of the city pot, okay? Because I know with some of these other things, it comes out of different entities. I know, but the public needs to know this, okay?
I'll do my best to.
Please, because I don't want to hear the police are this and that and the fire are this and that. This isn't reality, okay? They need to know.
So let me start it this way. Out of the seven hundred thousand, we had seven hundred and eleven in our proposed budget. Out of that number, looking at this year's costs, a hundred and seventy thousand of that came from outside the city tax dollars. That came from reimbursement through federal grants, reimbursement from contractual overtime that we work. Maybe it's at a, in a neighborhood or different places like that. So a hundred and seventy thousand of that would come off the top. That's not taxpayer money. So you take the the seven, seven eleven and you knock it down by that much. The, again, you go down another a hundred and eighty thousand. And what I did was I looked at how much of the budget can I, do I have control over? What do I have limited control over and and no control over? So that's, that's kind of how I broke it down. The reimbursables is a wash because that's no cost to the city, that hundred and eighty, seventy thousand.
And also with that, when there are entities that are going to pay a police officer top grade. There are officers that are not even at top grade, so therefore that money gets put back into the city's coffer. I don't care if it's five dollars. It still goes back into the city's coffer, okay? Okay.
So then, so if we look at the reimbursables, a hundred and seventy thousand, and we kind of set that aside. Because that's money that's coming into the city that doesn't cost taxpayer dollars. Then I looked at what which items are contractual that I have no control over at this point. It would be up to the council or negotiations later on to negotiate those items. That's a hundred and eighty thousand. Add those two together, that's a full half of the seven hundred thousand dollar budget is either not in my control or totally reimbursed by the city. So then I looked at the other three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Where do I have some total control or limited control? And I would associate that to if I'm having training, there, I can reduce some training. We're we're sort of down now to bare bones with with only Senate officers to require training. We have added a new function this year for crisis intervention for mental health that was not budgeted. And that has pushed up some costs there, so next year we could draw that back and and draw that program back a bit. So I have some control over training. I can do some reductions there. Court time. Court time is always a popular thing. And just to take a look at, I know Councilman Rootbreaker mentioned court time for district court, which is where our, you mentioned for our traffic. Our traffic now, a couple, we're down overall. That's the punchline. Our court overtime is down from even two years ago. We're down about eleven thousand dollars from two years ago. How did we get it down eleven thousand dollars so far, which is about thirteen percent down in court overtime from two years ago? We got there by better management. We had put a sergeant in charge of that and had the sergeant pick the days for the officers to go to court and try to maximize the time. In other words, if they're working during the daytime, try to schedule their court during the daytime. It doesn't always work out that way because as, as Lou would know, that's, you know, we're at the whim of who gets summoned into court and it may be your day off. So one officer may be on duty, one may be off duty. So that some of that's limited and that's why I would call that limited. But we have made some gains there, so we're down from seventy five thousand, we're down to sixty four thousand. I would not propose being able to take that any lower at this point. It's just, that's a tough number to hit and a tough number to impact. Regardless, in in example, circuit court, we have tried and tried there in circuit court and we're making no impact in that. We're still spending twenty thousand a year in circuit court and I can't seem to bring that down. That's, I don't have the scheduling control in circuit court that I do in district court. In other words, district court will work with us to schedule officers when they're working. Circuit court does not. So it it's it's a, it's a tough spot to be in. So we we do our best. We we work with the state's attorneys and and we try to get some officers excused. And and you really get down into the walking around the hallway kind of impact. Are you really needed? Can we get this officer excused? What I would like, if it were up to me, would be you take the officers first that are on on the overtime. Or actually, the ones that are working, you take them first, then go back on the street. Then you take the ones that are on overtime and send them home, and then you get to everybody else in the courtroom. But the court runs on its schedule, not the police department's schedule.
And Chief, interestingly enough, you're right, it wasn't Martin who talked about the the tickets, the timing in district court. I was talking about a different agenda.
Actually, that was what was told to us by the police administration.
That is absolutely correct.
Reductions in those costs due to the speed cameras.
Right.
I was only repeating what.
No, no, that is correct. That is correct. And and my comments were more, much more related, but I also had comments about court. And I'm almost convinced there's nothing you can do about it. My comments were much more related to what you and I know to be the, the failure of the state's attorney's office. Just to let people know, you know, it's going to be a plea, it's going to be Derek Hall. That that's, but the department can't do anything about that. It's just frustrating. We all do it. We go down and we see half the police department down there and not one trial. Or all the unrepresented people who are just going to get the case continued, but the officers are subpoenaed down there. And I I don't know how to fix that. We've tried to fix that for twenty years.
And in a perfect world, you would know two days in advance if you're going to need the officer. But the way it actually works is nobody takes a plea until the officer walks through the door and they see that their witnesses are here. And then they say, okay, we give up. We'll take the plea. Until the officer walks through the door, none of that happens.
Although that's not necessarily true and that's the.
Not in all cases.
Well, that's the frustrating point. There's a, there's a fair amount of communication which either is done or can be done, so the state actually knows. But again, it's not HPD's ability to to control that situation.
So I dropped that in. Court is a limited overtime for us. We've had some impact in court. We can continue to have some more impact in that with some even tighter management, but it's it's going to be down to the pennies at this point. We've squeezed thirteen percent reduction in court over the last two years. It has been all in district court and could some of that be attributed to speed cameras? That's tough. I would say a person that used to write tickets on Northern Avenue is not there anymore. The machine does that. And the officer that goes to court is our operator who works during the daytime, so we're not paying him overtime to go to court. Because he's, he just goes to court on duty, the one that runs that program. So I didn't, I didn't drill into it that tight. Well, I don't think I have the data available to me, honestly, to look at each ticket, type of ticket. But in overall, we we've seen some reduction there. Training, again, I I mentioned training. I have a a number of, you know, there's about sixty, fifty five thousand dollars in training for different things. Some of it's in service training, some of it is, and we've, we've, the union actually worked with us on that. This year, we didn't, we reduced our overtime for training a good bit because they took it as an exchange day as part of that contract negotiation. So some ups and downs. The, let let me just hit a few highlights here and and finish this up. The, where are we up? We are up on investigations. Our investigations are twice, almost twice what we thought it would be. We budgeted. Well, from year fourteen to year fifteen, we went from forty five thousand to eighty eight thousand, and that's an investigation. So that's handling cases. And we've, we've, we try to bill as much of the detectives' overtime to a grant. But sometimes the grant doesn't fit the crime, so we can't. But sometimes the grant doesn't fit the crime, so we can't. And if it doesn't fit the type of crime that we're having, then we can't bill our overtime to it. We still have to investigate the case and our detectives have a good track record of putting those cases, closing those cases very fast. So that's one of those that it's just sort of like, sort of like Eric guessing how much snow we're going to have each year. Is guessing how many major cases we're going to have that, that soak up a lot of overtime. From thirteen and fourteen, we went from fifty thousand down to forty-five thousand. Now we're back up to eighty-eight thousand projected this year for investigative overtime. Some control over that, though. We can do our best to limit the amount of detectives that are coming in. But we don't want to get into that too much. A plus for us has been an extension of duty. We, there's been talk about the twelve hour plan. And although the twelve hour plan cost us some money when it comes to the overtime, which they're taking as comp time and then sometimes they'll sell the comp time back. In other words, they work more than a forty hour week. And if you remember that discussion, we, we kind of guessed that that was going to increase our costs. We, we said we would probably be obligated for well over a hundred thousand. But we guessed that they would sell back about half of that or less and that's exactly what we're seeing. So our overall increase in that comp time sellback, that went from twenty thousand up to sixty-five thousand. So it went up forty-five thousand. But let me tell you where we've seen it drop. We were paying a lot of money for extension of duties. I'm sorry. That's not the point. We were paying a lot of money for manpower limits for fill-in shifts. In fiscal year thirteen, when I talked to you about that, that year, we were spending, we spent a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars to fill vacant shifts. In year fourteen, we made like a mid-year correction there. We cut that in half down to sixty thousand. And this year, we're going to end up at twenty-five thousand. So over eighty, over eighty thousand dollars in savings by making that change. So if you take that eighty thousand plus, you subtract your forty-five, that's how much you saved in rough dollars by moving to that, that twelve hour program to get us through that. It arrested that real fast growth we were seeing of a hundred and thirteen thousand and immediately brought it in the other direction. And then the comp time sellback was half what we thought. So that, that sort of all worked out how we thought and, and there was a net savings there, I think, for the city in that. Likewise, there was one other thing to point out, extensions of duties. This, I think, is direct impact of the twelve hour workday. Twelve hours is long enough. We, we send them home at the end of the shift. We tell them, a lot of those reports can wait till the next day unless it's a critical report. So extensions of duty, now that's one, two, three hours extra after their shift. And back in year, fiscal year thirteen, we spent a hundred and seventy thousand. Fourteen, a hundred and sixty thousand. And we've dropped that down to a hundred and eleven thousand. So almost a fifty thousand dollar savings in just one year under this full year of this new plan. So there's another fifty thousand dollars in savings to add on top of that thirty-five thousand we just talked about. All I think are attributed to moving to that twelve hour plan. So we've seen some big, some big chunks down and only one, one chunk move up. A net gain, I think, for the city overall. So that, that's how we're sort of breaking it down in different, in different sections. Let me just, let me just close with this. You have in your, in your report here, some of the areas where I do think we can make some immediate impact. The, you, you mentioned the adjustments, how much money is coming into the city. That is, that is up a lot higher than when we presented this budget to Michelle. We went back and took a look at that again. In other words, we're getting a lot more money coming in mainly from the DEA reimbursable, our DEA program that we're, we get reimbursed for our overtime. That has really increased. And so in, it has allowed us to readjust our projected budget for this year. The net result of all that is, we can, we can start this year, seven hundred and eleven thousand dollars by cutting off twenty-five thousand dollars because we have an additional, additional funds coming in from the DEA. That's the first twenty-five thousand. Then I picked up another twenty-five thousand just by reducing investigations. Again, that was eighty-eight thousand. We'll really try to tighten that back down, get pushed back towards that fifty thousand dollar mark.
I don't know how you can even do it.
That's, that's sort of guessing for what the temperature's going to be next year.
Yeah, you better believe it.
But I, but I think that's, that's optimistic. It's not, it's not completely out of reach. The reduction and extension of duty, that's a hundred and eleven thousand now. We'll continue to monitor that and try to pull that down to a hundred. Again, it was a hundred and seventy and we've already dropped it that far. Reduced training, our training other budget, again, that mentions that, that CIT program, Crisis Intervention for Mental Health. We're sending a lot of people down the road to Montgomery County for that. Try to draw that program back here and do that in-house with the help of the Mental Health Authority. So that gives us a total of fifty thousand dollars reduction in our proposed budget for overtime. It's from seven hundred and eleven down to six sixty. The remaining, we'll take another twenty-five thousand dollars out of our fuel budget. And so those seventy-five total out of operations, the other hundred and twenty-five would come from capital improvement according to what I have here. And that would be the crime cameras and, and deference from radio purchases. I'll take any questions. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chief. Yeah, I ran some numbers on the history of this. The overtime numbers, when we were at the depth of our, not being able to fund positions at the depth of our depression, starting in FY two thousand and ten, the last year I could find numbers for. The overtime number, the actual number was five hundred and forty-one thousand. The budgeted number this year is seven hundred and eleven thousand. Two thousand and eleven, it was three hundred and eighty-nine thousand. Two thousand and twelve, it was five hundred and fifty-one thousand. We're now at, at an estimate this year of seven seventy-one. So the proposal, you can argue the other way, it's going to be hard for the chief to meet this, the, what's in the sixteen budget because it's estimated at seven seventy-one this year. And because we're discussing police and fire, and I guess we're going to be discussing fire, I don't know. I, I just want to point out that the cuts I proposed, less than, than half were fire and police. Way less than half were fire and police cuts. So I'm not picking on fire and police.
No, and I didn't, and I didn't go there with that.
And, and also, I've looked at fire and police budgets as a percent of the general fund budget. And they have gone up, not as enormously as, as some would say. But back in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten, two thousand and eleven, they ranged from forty-four to forty-six percent. They're up to forty-nine percent now. That doesn't include the police and fire retirement contributions. Didn't have time to put those in. That would make that number a little higher. But the main thing is, is the difference. So this council has, has supported fire and police. They're, they're, they're up three percent points over the last eight years in terms of percent of the total city budget, general fund budget. So I don't think I was being unreasonable in saying, let's get a handle on something because we just can't keep spending. We have to find ways. I respect fire, I respect police. This has nothing to do with that. And that was the way I thought, looking at the past year's figures, that we could get back to that. Now, the problem I have with these reductions is at least a hundred and twenty-five thousand of them are not repeatable. If we've got a handle on overtime, I'd want that to be a policy, a repeatable policy. The camera CIP, radio CIP, I, you know, I don't think those are repeatable. So, and if they overlap with the other cuts you've taken, then that's a double count. I don't know if they have or not. But, but, so these others are, you know, they're, they're fine. I appreciate the difficulties you have with the subject, but it's increased almost fifty percent when we've been adding officers. So, you know, we can go back and forth in all the different categories, but those are just where the numbers are. And Penny, I have done a lot of policy work too, by the way, not just, not just numbers.
No, no, what I said was, is you are a number man. I'm not, Marty. But when I was, I, I really did not know that most of the overtime was actually money that was not coming out of the city. It was money that was coming in, that was, that was paying for the overtime because it's not going to show that on a check.
Well, that's just a portion. That was a hundred and seventy and that was, that's probably true in two thousand and ten as well.
It's, well, that number has been increasing for us. That, so it, it used to be around twenty-five thousand. We're up about forty, forty-five thousand in just DEA alone increases.
But at the same time, the, the, the numbers have gone up that much overall. So it's the same proportion.
Yes, but I think some of it would be attributed to our, our reimbursables that are coming in. But, yeah, so, you know, half are through reimbursables or actually a quarter through reimbursables, the other quarter through contractual. And then the other half, I, I talked about being limited, but we have some, some impact there. I think the, the training, I think keeping an eye on our extension of duties are some realistic things that I can hit. I didn't want to give you some numbers I didn't think I could hit.
Well, you know, if, if we decide to accept, you know, that, that it is what it is, then every time we see an estimate for adding officers, we need to add eight to ten thousand dollars for overtime costs to the, to what the cost of that position's going to be. Because that's where, that's what this amounts to per, per sworn position. So we, you need to add it because it, we've been adding positions and the overtime cost goes up anyhow.
But then we've been losing police officers and then getting police officers back. So we really aren't on a schedule that we have every police officer that's going to be in place for the next however many years either.
I'm just saying at the lowest point, we had much lower overtime costs.
I think a couple of things. First is, thank you for looking at the number and attempting to identify alternatives. And maybe, you know, as the mayor pointed out, we're, we're not done with the budget obviously. But maybe, maybe an effort to find some compromise between the proposal that you provided and the one on, on the sheet here as it relates specifically to overtime would be, and I'll just use this as an example. The camera CIP, fifty thousand dollars. I would rather, in the process, you come back and say, look, you know, we, we need the cameras, but I can guarantee you that that won't be in there next year, but I can save you fifty out of the two hundred in overtime. And that is a savings, you know, on a continual basis. And I don't know if that's possible, but I guess I'm trying to look at it.
To take another fifty out of overtime?
Well, I'm trying to look at it from both perspectives to say, you know, we're going to get the cameras this year, but it's not going to be a future expense. You know what I mean? And, and no, not, not, not above the two hundred. I'm saying reduce the two hundred to fifty. Does that make sense?
And, and just look at the overtime?
Yeah.
I'm not following.
There's no, I don't see overtime.
There, there isn't, there isn't on here. What you did was you tried to find two hundred thousand that wasn't an overtime related reduction, right?
No, 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 no. The, I found fifty thousand. That is, my, my mistake. The, the first one, two, three, four items, which total fifty thousand, are the overtime.
All right.
So let's mark all that. That is the.
Listen, I both were throwing on that.
That is the overtime. My apologies. I, I rushed, I rushed the memo a little bit.
And I do want to say typically.
Then we're good. For me, we're good.
So fifty of it is purely bringing that number down.
You did exactly what I just asked you to go to, so that, that's excellent. We're good.
You're a mind reader, Chief. So you're a mind reader.
Well, and typically, in the other areas, when we look at the projects and the CIPs, they're not ones that we repeat. However, what I would say is that we can turn to Chief and say, okay, there's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar reduction you are able to do out of the CIPs. Can you do that again off of what you have in here in fiscal year seventeen? And the answer to that's going to be yes, because with the crime cameras and the radios, it's going to be yes.
Is, is, okay, we're going to make sure we close the city.
Well, because with the crime cameras and the radios, what is going to happen is because of the sheer magnitude and number, we already have said that it's probably a five to seven year plan to get them all replaced. So we're going to come back and if you look at those specific projects in here, we have, again, more crime camera replacements in seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty. And it was our plan that that was probably going to continue at some level. Because with the number of those, the reality is one to two breaking or needing replacement a year is very possible.
Yeah, and when, and when we are deemed by people on the street as being Little Baltimore, I would say that the need of the cameras are very crucial. It really is. And Mayor, I know you don't like to hear that, but it is the truth. The more that you, that you're on the street, the more you hear it, we've got a problem. And you can only handle as much as you can handle. And that's, you know, that's reality.
Yeah, cameras are a great tool for us and I think the replacements, even if we can keep some of this CIP money in this, this budget here. I think it'll make a big impact this year. Councilman?
Thank you. First, I want to thank you for doing this. You must have had a fun weekend. Just joking, just joking.
It's been busy. And I, you know, Jack Moulton, you know, he just, he works well under pressure. I dropped a lot of this on him at the last minute and he's really put it together, so.
Okay. Two hundred thousand dollar cut. How confident are you that you can succeed in doing that if it comes to that?
We can do this. What I proposed to you, we can do it.
Minimal impact on operations on the city.
Yes, that's what I was looking for, without a real drastic, some, without trying to change contracts.
It's not going to change overtime on operations, right? This, this cut?
The only, the only one would be the extension of duties and investigations. It's ten thousand dollars apiece, so it's about ten percent in one, fifteen percent in another that we're going to try to draw down. Not dramatic changes, but.
Okay, how about any possibilities in, in, when, when the officers get together in the morning? What's it called?
The roll call. Yeah, that's, that's roll call. For next year, not this year, because it's a contractual issue. That'll have to be, it's written in their contract that they get that this year. You know, one thing I failed to mention was, our, our department has a good track record for getting grants. There are no grants in this. So over and above this, each officer is getting, you know, some money, working grants, highway safety grants.
Well, do you think, do you think?
Different grants that's not, that are not in here.
Okay, but do you think there's, that's going to continue? I mean, grants certainly aren't guaranteed.
Yeah, we're doing pretty well in that. You know, Chris Shank with the Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention, he's helping us with it. Kind of protecting that Safe Streets Grant, some other grants that, that are, some real go-to grants for us out of, out of the GOCCP are the violent crime, the ceasefire grant. There, I finally got it out. Ceasefire Grant is a good one. JAG Grants and we have a few burn grants.
Get some good help from the federal government as well.
Yeah, through the burn grants are coming from federal government.
I, I meet quarterly with our federal representatives and they're always on top of those grants and helping the city.
Yeah, so that's going to be in addition to that. So kind of put a little money back in the, in the officer's hands. But at the same time, we can, we can continue operations and special.
Okay, within this budget, you're talking about gas. We, we got a lucky summer. We might not have a lucky winter. If the price of gasoline goes back up, what's it going to do to this?
Well, I asked Jack that and, and the number he came back with, he says, actually, you're looking at forty-five thousand you could take out of that. But just be safe and do twenty-five. So we gave ourselves a twenty thousand dollar cushion for a few extra tanks.
Okay, and suppose, suppose you have to, I mean, this, this has been talked about a little bit, but I want to hear your comments on this. Suppose this process has to be repeated. You have to come back next year with two hundred thousand in cuts. How are you going to do it?
Well.
Can you do it?
I can't speak exactly off, well, the CIP is the biggest thing there. Find another hundred and fifty thousand out of CIP, or I'm sorry, a hundred and twenty-five thousand of CIP. I think that's doable. We can probably keep our fuel costs, you know, the same for next year. And then the overtime, finding another fifty thousand dollars in the overtime, I would just say I'd try to hold it at that level where I'm at now. I'll continue to work on it, but it's, it's tough for me to see that. It takes a good year to see what impact I'm having on that. So.
And the, and the only other thing I would add to the overtime is, as Chief will tell you fondly, hopefully fondly. Your Director of Finance and Budget Officer always say overtime is an easy line to look at. So Chief and I have had many, many, many conversations before this budget book is done on, on those numbers. But what I wouldn't want to say is, yes, he can confidently do that in seventeen. I think fiscal year seventeen at this point, we do have contract negotiations will be reopened. So if salary scales continue to be adjusted, that does impact our overtime and compounds those numbers. So I just, just, just to be wary there, overtime and the CIP budget.
We appreciate your advice, Chief.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have our fire chief come up next?
So basically, in fire, I'll just start. In fire, in grand total, in the budget for fiscal year sixteen proposed, we have a total of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in overtime. So to reduce it by a hundred thousand is actually asking the chief to do a reduction fifty percent in overtime. And I will say the two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar number that is in the budget is below recent history and where their numbers have been running. And so now we have the hires, we have salary adjustments that have occurred, fiscal year fifteen with the contracts. So in sitting down and looking at the numbers, chief.
We currently do as much as we can to mitigate overtime. The problem with reducing it further is, in order to comply with contract language, that's going to make it pretty tough. You'd almost have to amend the contract, because we have minimum staffing in the contract language, so we can only go to as low as fifteen people on duty on shift. And then that's what generates the overtime that we've got to backfill.
So one of the things that we looked at there, now this is not going to be an item that can be repeated in fiscal year seventeen, I will absolutely say that is. In the fiscal year sixteen budget originally, in our proposal, we had seventy thousand dollars of pay-go for monies from the general fund to replace fencing at the fire training tower. So in looking at the difficulties and looking at a way to reduce and where we could reduce, and where it could be more managed, that's our current suggestion.
We could push that out. We could also probably push out the purchase of one or two support vehicles another year or two, but that's only a one-time savings.
Just going back to two thousand and ten, when there were fewer firefighters than there are now, overtime was a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. We can't do this. This city can't sustain endless increases in service, endless increases in compensation. We can't sustain it and maintain city services. Somewhere, we have to make adjustments. I suggested a place, it hits a brick wall. So I guess in the future, I'd like to hit more about other options, if indeed those aren't options, or else I'd like to start changing contracts. We're doing something so that we don't have to keep incurring these costs. I think we have to look at how we're organized. So, but we, we see these, and then we say, well, we can, everybody gets the impression we could just raise taxes to meet them. I'm harping on that subject today, because I don't think that's where we want to go. I said that last year, being consistent. And again, I just went back to the period when we had a lower level of service, we had lower, fewer employees, we had lower overtime. I won't argue the details, that's a fact. Anyone who wants to see it, I've got it.
So the contract is what it sounds like.
Yeah, I guess, I guess. And yet we're criticized, because we don't meet commitments, we haven't done fair by these employees, we haven't done fair by public safety employees, we're criticized, we didn't meet our commitments. That's not what the numbers say. Numbers don't say that whatsoever.
Do I hear a willingness to agree to these proposed cuts, or is there consensus on that? What the chief is proposing? Is that what you're, you're counting on in the, in what you told us at the beginning, Michelle, in terms of the total six hundred and five thousand in savings? That includes what the chief is talking?
It did.
Any other thoughts on what the chief is proposing?
Well, I think part of the key to that process would be a more in-depth review of those items. In other words, you know, we obviously are having conversations about potential uses, you know, greater than that simple center, you know what I mean? That is part of a larger conversation with other partners, and so I don't know where that play, you know, where the fence plays into that conversation. You know what I mean? I, unless you, you know, unless I can pull out specifically what vehicle's right at this moment and know exactly, you know, what you're referring to, you know, if it's a hundred thousand dollar issue, you know, pushing that out isn't, isn't to me a viable solution.
One of them is utility three, that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand. One of them is one of the fire marshal's support vehicles, one of them is the chief's vehicle, so.
Yeah, and I understand you're giving me a list of vehicles, but I don't, you know, I'm thinking back to just the last eight vehicles we looked at, probably in this past year's budget, and, you know, the information on them are sort of all over the board. So I, for me to say, hey, let's just push some vehicle out or push some fencing out, I want to be able to research out a little more, but my opinion.
My answer is. And I don't know if there's any other solutions to it, but Martin came up with some very good ideas. It seems that the staff has only said to fire and police, since Martin was looking at fire and police, and I can understand why, because it's the vast bulk of our budget.
But it wasn't the vast bulk of my cuts? Fifty percent?
Understood, no, understood.
I'm not picking on fire and police.
Oh, I never said you were. No, I don't think you are at all. I don't think you are at all. But I'm just wondering if, because I understand what Kristen is saying also, that we're going to face these things next year unless vehicles aren't in that bad a shape. I don't know if any other potential cuts could be made anywhere else, but I, again, I, I don't believe based upon history that we're going to be able to solve it by the overtime cuts until we end up with contract language. And so one of the issues, I mean, one of the issues here is, it seems six and one and a half a dozen of the other, if you put off those vehicle purchases, almost seems equivalent to taking money from the reserve fund. If I had the choice, I'd rather put off the vehicle purchases, saying, okay, we'll not touch the reserve fund this year, and that would allow still for that option to take place within the next year or two. I'd rather use the reserve fund option as a, as an emergency, so that once we get to the point where we're here now, and we got a chief who says, I, you know, I can't put off getting another vehicle, I need them now. That would be my feelings. So I'm okay with this situation.
Any other thoughts?
The training, the training center, and I don't remember where I was when the whole training center thing was brought up, but the fencing around, all right? When is that supposed to happen? Isn't that, because it is supposed to be a joint effort that we're bringing in. So when do you actually have to?
That's a good question, I really don't know.
You really don't know, because?
A lot of that depends on the school board, the county.
I thought that was a county project.
It is.
Then why are we putting?
Because what we're talking about is a fence around.
Correct.
The burn center at seventy grand.
Right.
And I think, all I'm saying is, I don't want to dump seventy grand on something if it's part of a larger, you know what I mean, outlook within the next two- to three-year period. I understand that it's a necessity if that doesn't come to fruition in a timely manner, but, but if it does, then, you know what I mean, then what we put up may not be what is envisioned for sort of the larger scope of the project.
And how we fund it. When we see the whole stuff.
Yeah, yeah, and how we fund it, I mean.
So how to fund it?
They may want to exit me in the parking lot.
Maybe some other brand.
I don't know.
We don't know yet.
Yeah, and the only thing that I can remember was fencing that was mentioned. So it was how crucial it was to have the fencing.
Right now, part of fencing is almost falling down.
Correct. And that's what I thought. Okay.
Thanks, chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you, chief. Thanks.
I guess it would make sense to bring up our director of community and economic development next.
And actually, to take a good look at that, for economic redevelopment, to make the adjustments, I'm going to share with you.
If, if I could, just as an intro, this, sir, this is likely my last time speaking in front of you, and I just wanted to take a moment, I cleared this with the mayor beforehand, to thank you, to thank each of you for your leadership over the years. And I think that's reflective in the difficult task you have in front of you here this evening. So, so just thank you for your leadership, and I greatly appreciate it.
Thank you for all your dedicated years of service to the city of Hagerstown. I really do think you have done a lot of good for the city of Hagerstown and have been the person that delivers news that a lot of people don't want to deliver, and you've, I guess, taken a lot of heat over the years for decisions that this body has decided to move the city of Hagerstown in a new direction, and it hasn't always been an easy task. So thank you for taking up that challenge and executing it well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, I was just going to say, with, with the recommendation to reduce the pay-go or the general fund transfers into economic redevelopment of a hundred thousand, yes, doable, sustainable over two years, yes. And what we thought we would do.
I don't know if it's sustainable over two years. This is what we can do in fiscal sixteen. I would recommend that you would have a discussion then during the summer to decide what programs that you may have to cut back on in seventeen. It's doable, but you're going to have to hit some additional programs. And so perhaps staff can come back during the summer, present the programs that we have, and decisions could be made over which programs that you would like to see continuing, which ones would be cut back.
And which we might be able to fund with bonds if we can.
Yes, sir. But definitely in sixteen, we've come up with a way that we can cut back. One way to do that, to reduce the general fund contribution by a hundred thousand, is to increase the upper floor fund transfer by twenty-six thousand dollars. So instead of a hundred thousand coming over from there, we'd increase it to a hundred and twenty-six. And it's a one-time thing for one-time programs, so that kind of makes sense. And then we would have deductions in other existing programs, such as the sign and facade grant program. It's twelve thousand five hundred dollars, but I met with staff immediately after getting this list, and staff came up with these ideas. And the idea is that we would work with our Main Street partners as a challenge to raise twelve thousand five hundred dollars. That's a type of program that Main Streets do. So it's a good challenge right out of the gate.
General, Michelle.
Yes.
Can you help the council if they turn it?
Yes.
Section five, page thirteen.
Yes.
So they can actually see, just because I'm thinking, you know, if you're, if you're wanting to build the tax base, community and economic development is going to be critical moving forward. So I think it's important for the council to understand how this impacts the budget and where it does on that page.
Yes, sir.
I agree.
We're being consistent with what the mayor and council want to do for their priorities.
You know, for me, in looking at these items, I think they do speak directly to the assessable base. If you don't invest, your assessable base isn't going to increase, and you're not going to generate an increase in your bottom-line tax revenue. That's just, that's just the reality, which is ironic, because folks often say, you know, why are you doing these things? You know, you can't afford, you know, to pay your employees. Well, the whole reason is to increase the assessable base so that you can affordably pay your personnel. So for me, I had dropped them by half each, and I agree with your perspective that, you know, even if you drop them by half, if you leave them right now, you're not going to know which ones it's going to impact.
Yes, sir.
Until you know, and we didn't know six months ago that twenty-two people were going to take on, you know, the eight thousand dollars for the vacant homes, but we do know that now, so we know where to direct that money. So the issue isn't so much where you cut it at this point, it's how much it is, and then decide where it's directed to.
Yes, sir. And on that program, we, actually, I think by speaking about it here, we got even more applications coming in. But on the apartment unit reduction, we were thinking we'd cut that in half and still be able to pull off a good incentive package for someone reducing the number of units in a building, and that's kind of targeted to the buildings like on South Prospect Street, the big mansion-type houses that were divided up into small apartments. The Franklin Street efforts, in this fiscal year, will spend about fifty of the original hundred. We had fifty budgeted for next year. We're saying we would reduce that by ten. And then the Partners in Economic Progress Program, we have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars budgeted for that. We think we can scale that back, fourteen thousand dollars. But also know that with the model that we built for the student housing, we have twenty thousand four hundred budgeted for that as our total possible exposure. If, realistically, I would say half of that would probably be expended, or less than half of that. And so would that be a known mid-year, if we needed more PEP money, we'd be able to come in and say, we do have applications for PEP, can we make a transfer? So we can come up with your hundred thousand this year for sure. The question would be for next year whether or not that could be repeated. And I'm sure somehow it could, but value judgments will have to be placed on which programs and for how much.
Thank you. Any questions or feedback on John's comments?
And I'm been a strong supporter of the economic development programs. I've been a strong supporter of investing in these things. I thought there was money here. I put that in as a placeholder. John's come through, thank you, John. Whether we can sustain or not, I don't know, but I think, I want to go as I see progress. And if we see good progress, these things coming to fruition, I think we can come back and invest. But I don't want to raise taxes to support money that we may not be using and only have that carried over for the next year or go somewhere else, so.
Understood, sir.
I had to find a place. By this budget, I was forced to go find places without being able to restructure the government myself. So that's what I did. It was not attacking economic redevelopment, and as you know, I threw the planning commission and other places I've supported increasing this tax base as much as anybody here.
And I thank you for that, sir. The only other thing I would add, if you take a look at the department budget for community and economic development, what we spent in fourteen and what we have budgeted for sixteen, it's less than sixteen than what our actual was in fourteen. And because of the programs that this body passed, our vacant structure and our increased rental licensing program, actually, this year, you're realizing a savings of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, because of the startup costs and how the licensing years run and everything. So there's three hundred and fifty thousand that you're saving over what we had budgeted for fifteen compared to what we'll actually spend. So I just wanted to share that.
John.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
John, I want to. Say this to you.
Yes, sir.
You've been very attentive to the needs of Hagerstown. You've put your heart and soul into this, I know that. You and I have worked together on a lot of things, and we're in the same building, so I see you very frequently. I think that much of the success we've had over the last few years has been, the economic success has been related to your efforts, your leadership. And I don't agree with you all the time, and you don't agree with me all the time. That's what happens in government.
Yes, sir.
But I appreciate all that you've done, and I would only ask, when you get to DC, well, first, I wish you great success down there. But any, any way you, any clever ideas that you, that you find down there that we don't have back here? Just pick up that telephone, call someone, will you?
I definitely will, sir.
He's sending us the streetcar plan. We're getting a whole set of, free, all.
Only you know how well they worked with me for the time we spent together, and you changing my entire opinion on a vast amount of things in this community.
I appreciate that, sir.
And John, if I could, while you're at the table, and the department heads are here, we talk at department head meetings about being a leader, we talk about leaving a legacy, a visible legacy. John, you're going to be able to do that, whether it's looking at one seventy West Washington, whether it's the thirty-six forty property here on North Potomac, one forty South Potomac, forty-three fifty-three West Washington. forty-three fifty-three West Washington, the city center plan and some of the catalyst projects that we already have underway. Those are all a direct result of John's active and positive participation. I think he's always been a good team player with other departments. He's well admired in the organization as somebody that has integrity. Oftentimes, we've given him very tough jobs. Anytime you put somebody in charge of code enforcement, that automatically puts them in an unpopular position. And he's been on a roller coaster on that for a long time, where we beefed up code enforcement, we pulled back code enforcement, we beefed it back up. That's all impacted John directly and I think he's handled the position with grace. I think he's handled it with integrity and professionalism. I just wanted to say thank you for, for creating a legacy that you'll be able to enjoy when you visit Hagerstown.
Absolutely. I, I thank you for that, Bruce.
Hey, what you just said was you got, you're, you're leaving big shoes to fill.
Or, or not.
Good point.
All right. Did we hear, did any other department head need to come to the table? I don't know if...
I think we covered the ones where there were recommendations that involved operations and we just wanted to give them a chance, unless you wanna cover the pension explanation.
And, and I just wanted to come back, so, one last time, on the, on the police and fire pension, the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, we can achieve that in fiscal year sixteen and we can achieve that by doing an employer contribution, reducing that from like thirteen point seven one, which was the recommendation by C-Biz, down to twelve point three percent.
So, you're comfortable with that one twenty-five? Is that what I hear you saying?
We're not, I, you know what? I, I'll jump in there.
I'm struggling.
She's not comfortable.
I'm a no on that one.
Karen's not comfortable.
Okay, I, I...
I agree with Kristen.
But we can, we can do it if that's what the...
It's, it's, it's...
The approach the mayor and council wanna take.
We have met and again, I have supported fully funding everything they recommend. Very, very few municipalities have done that. I'm trying to weigh one thing against another. What I'm weighing is just continuing to, I may increase a very expensive plan and by the way, we're not taking away from anybody's retirement. This is just keeping level the amount we contribute to the reserves, not cutting it out altogether like a lot of municipalities. We're keeping it level for a couple of years. We're facing a hard budget situation. And we'll, we'll, down the road, need to make other adjustments. But we're, we're putting the whole thing, the whole issue here on the back of the taxpayer and I, that, that's, that's, in my opinion, not the way to go. I think this is sustainable. Other jurisdictions have, have done it and we're doing a lot less than what they've done.
But until that time, unless we make a decision at this table, just how I understand it, unless we were to make a decision at this table to change the parameters of the plan we have signed on to...
This is a retirement plan, not a health plan.
That's right. That we've signed on to, we, we will not catch up. If, if we stay level, we will not catch up.
And, and I think, just to go on the record, while not an ideal situation, it is a recommendation for next year that we're comfortable, as long as everyone understands that unless we have extraordinary performance on our investments, that we could be increasing potential future liabilities.
You're gonna add it to the backend.
Unless we look at the structure of the pension or look at the contributions. Now, C-Biz, when they were here, did suggest that we look at a funding policy, which is something that we had planned to come back later in the year with.
And, and I, and I think that, you know, I think it gets that question, you know, we have both chiefs up here, having a good discussion with us on wage-related items within those overall budgets. One, I think, is ten million dollar budget, the other was a seven million dollar budget. They make up about sixty-six percent of our general fund side. And these, these cuts here, I think, about thirty-three percent of the proposed adjustments. So, you know, as Marty rightly states, you know, it's only thirty-three percent of what we're proposing to change to what takes up about sixty-five percent of our overall general fund side. And, right, twenty-eight minus eighteen?
On the operational side, public safety is about fifty percent.
It's fifty percent.
Not, not including any of the capital improvement projects.
That's what I mean. Yeah, if you include the total general fund side.
It's gone up from forty-five to ten in two years.
Yeah. And, and when you look at the one twenty-five, I, I think, as I said a year ago, we had that conversation, they came in and said, you're gonna have to look at something, you know, if, that ceiling's gonna keep climbing and, and it gets back to Lou's age-old description of the dollar, you know? That number is eating further and further into the salary and benefit dollar that we have available. And if we don't, if we don't sit here or we don't come to terms with that issue, by keeping it level here is going to add it to the backend because nobody, nobody is gonna look at those figures and say, every year for the next infinite number of years is going to outperform the previous set of years. Even in that analysis we were given, the projected performance levels over the next ten-year period did not match what we've actually experienced over the last ten-year period. And, and so I think that expectation is unrealistic. I think the expectation that we're gonna allow it to climb to fifteen to seventeen to twenty percent is unrealistic and the reality is that number, while I don't agree with it being, you know, level funded this year, we're going to have to come to terms that it's going to eat into our ability to provide the number of personnel necessary, to provide the benefit level necessary. That's the reality that's coming in the next three to five-year period down the road.
It, it already is. It already is. I mean, you take that away, then you gotta make it up somewhere else or else raise taxes to fulfill it. I'm saying with our tax base down as much as it is, that we've gotta get through this period without excessively raising taxes. And we, we, we gotta clamp down. I said it last year, third or fourth time I've said this. And we gotta weigh one thing against another. And I'm, what I'm proposing is not nearly as drastic as what other communities have done, that we will need to build back up. Yes, if we maintain this better plan than what the other employees have, is what we're going to have to do. Once again, we're, we're, we have a titanium health plan, we have a great retirement plan for the employees. And we can't just say, well, whatever those require, it's on the backs of the taxpayers.
But we've, we've adopted, we, we've, we've entertained no changes to that structure of the relationship that we've established.
Correct.
But it's not a mandatory, it's a recommended contribution and it has to do with the reserves and how fast we build up the reserves.
I understand, so, so, yeah.
So, we do have reserves. It's easy to say, let's fund it, but then let's go find the money somewhere.
No, what I'm saying is we need to have that conversation with those groups that it impacts and say, here are the parameters we're going to have to establish as a cooperative effort together.
Yeah, I think we need to tell them, we can't maintain this now going into next year 'cause we can't, in my opinion.
I don't, I don't think that the, the connection is clearly being made between this body and those parties to say, the hundred and twenty-five equates to another officer or, or another fireman within this plan changes and as they are impacted, we're not going to be able to fund that, 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 that specific request because of this item. And, and I think that's the conversation that has to be had and, and absent it, I, I just, I can't say, let, let's level fund something that we know we're gonna add on to without that conversation ever being conducted.
Level fund it now, we'll have a conversation during negotiations next year.
I, I think Marty's, I think Marty's right on this particular item. The fact is, and I don't like, I don't like doing this, I, there's not a whole lot...
I don't like it either.
Well, I know you don't. There's not a whole lot I see in here I like. However, if we to, if we were to design a plan to replenish this when times get better, if they ever do, I mean, that, that's something we can work with in the future and it wouldn't take a whole lot to replenish it if we did it over a series of five years or something. But I just, and, and just let me say, there's nothing fun or nothing easy about any of this. And I, I really have to commend Marty for coming up with at least someplace to start. Marty, this probably isn't gonna come out anywhere where, where you're suggesting and, but you, you, you presented this plan where we could have a discussion. Otherwise, if we hadn't had this plan, it would've been a heck of a roundtable, but we wouldn't have gotten anyplace. And so, thank you for doing that. This budget's likely to take a long time to get settled. I don't know if there are any, if there are any options about going past the deadline or not.
No.
And if there are, if there aren't, then maybe we just go with this year's budget into next year.
Michelle, is your proposal, one point five, is there with me? I, I hear, but I don't listen sometimes. Does that include this tension decrease?
It did. It did. Because where we took a hard look was not necessarily all the things that were one hundred percent comfortable, but finding a way...
Understood.
Finding a way to compromise on the items that are manageable, that we could actually achieve.
I support it.
Not tied up in contract.
The one twenty-five cut?
And then what Michelle and I were trying to do and others from the department heads was get it down to a number, which is in the neighborhood of two hundred and fifty thousand plus, depending on your views of the outline plan that Michelle gave you earlier. So, we've got it, keeping in mind it's a forty-two million dollar budget, I think it is a manageable situation for us, not with entirely easy decisions.
Right.
Not without some difficulty, but I think we can manage this and get this done over the next month.
Especially if we don't hit our reserves too badly, right?
Well, I think the two things, and I'll just say this, Michelle, China, the two things we are trying to protect are the general fund reserve and we're trying, and we're trying to avoid the lapse, just because...
Trying to avoid the what?
The, the reduction in expenditures for lapse, because it sets up, we think, for finance and the new city administrator, some real difficulty in terms of delivering a budget at the end of that year with a lot of what-ifs. So, we're trying to take some of the what-ifs out of there for the new city administrator and for Michelle.
Okay, my question is, or at the top of your page, I think it was last week, was the position that John was holding. Are we looking at putting that one on hold?
I don't know, that's what Bruce was talking about.
At, at in hold? No, no.
I, I was talking about putting it on hold and letting the new city administrator flex around.
Well...
But that's somewhere where we could get a lot of money and there's a lot of professionals in that department.
No, I'm agreeing with you. Shh.
So, that's where I was.
Okay.
And what we're saying is leave it on hold, but don't take it out of the budget.
Right.
Let the new city administrator, if, if, if development is a priority for building the tax base, you're all gonna be working on that. The mayor and council, the new city administrator and the department heads. Let the new city administrator offer recommendations to you. We won't fill the position, so if you choose to eliminate it, that, that's, that's your choice.
But then that doesn't take the money out of the budget, so...
No, but it, but it gives us the ability, it gives us all the flexibility we need to have.
Well, I, I guess I, I'll have to see what the, where the, what your proposal is 'cause I, you know, don't fully understand it at this point.
So, can we just run down this list to see if there's any firm, this...
We'll just recup, I think, repeat the list you gave.
Correct.
Yeah, you just tell us what it all is again.
Okay, so, let's come back though and touch just briefly on the public works supervisor. Originally, those weren't in my numbers, but from...
You still have the position in the budget.
Correct. But that position was gonna stay in the budget, but it's...
You have one ten for the general fund, one hundred for economic redevelopment, two hundred for, um, let's see, you had two hundred miscellaneous police, seventy fire and a hundred and twenty-five in the retirement fund. Is that correct?
Plus three hundred and sixty-one thousand five hundred in revenue from a...
Plus three sixty-one from where now? That's what, this is where I'm losing.
For our one and a half cent property tax adjustment.
All right, so where does that get us?
Then we would need about two hundred and thirty-three thousand five hundred dollars for fiscal year sixteen.
Okay, so I have a proposal for part of that.
Okay.
I'm not gonna, I'm not saying I agree with it.
Mr. Alshar has the floor.
I'm sorry to cut you off, but I think we just need to...
Pick up, Kristen, you have the floor.
What I have is, and this is just one councilperson, was the one thirty from the position lapse, the CIP by a hundred, I agreed with, and the economic development by a hundred, which I think John alluded to, small cuts there. And then I had reduced the police from one, two hundred down to one fifty, because I think that that CIP savings is just a CIP savings. You can pick one of those two projects. And then I had fifty for, instead of a hundred for overtime, fifty for fire, which is not the whole seventy for the fence, but if it needs, you know, twenty thousand to, to, to make it operable until we figure out what's going on with that larger program. And then I had two fifty for the bring the fund balance to fiscal policy level. I had over three years instead of two, so instead of three seventy-five, it'd be two fifty over three years, which gives us a bit of a cushion in terms of how economics, you know, will go. I, I'm, I'm not a fan of the one twenty-five. For me, that, that wasn't on. And I had four hundred and eighty in total tax revenue, three sixty that you identified, but if you look in here, I believe it says that your constant yield for, from this year to next is, is about a half a penny difference. And, and I know people complain all the time, you know, why don't you go back to constant yield? For the last several years, it hasn't been an issue of going back to constant yield, it's been how do we keep up? And all I'm saying is, is if you're gonna do one and a half, you might as well do it at an even two and stay even with constant yield, or you're going to fall further behind in, 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 in your, your base for, for, for the, you know, foreseeable years forward. And for me, so that would be a four hundred and eighty and then whatever that total was, that, that...
So, that's your one and, one and a half makes up for the difference in the, the county differential and the other half is the constant yield.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's, sounds logical to me, Chris.
I don't know what that was, two thirty-three, thirty-four...
Well, we've exhausted two hours already.
Okay, can I just say one thing? Knowing that if we could eliminate positions, that positions are going away. And also putting a hold on positions that are part-time positions, because again, we don't keep track of this from moving into full-time position. And that's not gonna tell you anything because I don't know who's supposed to be moving into full-time positions. But there is also a cost savings there because it's the need, a reality, to do full-time, okay? And no one has really kept track of this and that bothers me because again, that's money that's being spent out and it then will roll over into the new budget. And Michelle, there's other ones that I just need to talk to you about. The upper floors is one thing. I, I wanna see how these programs are actually going as to do we keep that much money in there now and then, you know? I'm not seeing it moving that quickly. And I'm not saying, hey, there couldn't be beaucoup people coming in here, but right now, it's not happening. And I think if people really wanted to, they would've jumped on it, moving also some of that money. And I just, I've got a problem with that. The, the whole rails and what's the trail, the trail thing? I don't even know where we're at with that because now Rodney says it's a slow process, so what are we actually looking at? And knowing that that's one of the big, big ticket items, all right? So, I just have to get more into it.
Well, again, I don't, I don't think we're gonna resolve the budget tonight.
I didn't say that. I just said, okay?
But we have had a very productive conversation and we will continue it. We'll schedule some more time next week on a work session to continue this conversation. I guess in the meantime, staff can take what you've heard tonight in terms of some of the other suggestions and maybe we can have sort of a, a side-by-side comparison or something like that to look at the different options, what we've heard tonight. Does that sound reasonable?
At the moment, just like you say, at the moment, 'cause I'm, I'm somebody that's open to discussion, since it's always happened. But I said it this year, I'm not open to increasing taxes right now. That's where I am.
Not even at the penny and a half, Bill.
I'm not open to increasing taxes.
Right.
Not even a penny and a half.
Right, and that's why I'm trying to find that other part.
That's why I'm, I'm not open to it. I've made a proposal. I can, you can put it, flex that around. I even tried to do, get a good start on a two-year proposal and said what we need to do if it doesn't work. Well, I mean, I, I can say some things, but I mean, I said, we're gonna have to readjust the whole city if that doesn't work, if the tax base doesn't come up. But I see as economic redevelopment, I see people coming in here and saying, when they see a problem, they raise taxes, as much as anti-economic development as adding staff positions, maintaining staff... as much as anti-economic development as adding staff positions, maintaining staff positions or, or other, other things and all these programs we have. I think if we keep the programs sound, we can see how they're doing and find a way, if one of them takes off, find a way. But again, I think the tax rate is an economic development issue also. We've got to remember that.
And the only thing I would say, I mean, that theory, if somebody's coming here and says, what's the combined city-county tax rate? My answer would be same as it was five years ago. We haven't raised it a penny in five years.
What they look at Lou is what they pay here versus right across the boundary. That's what I think. I'm sorry.
No, well, that's, that's the county versus the city and that's going to be the same problem whether you, no matter what.
I don't think it's even looking. I think that once it hits and they know that there's going to be a tax increase, that's all it has to say. They're not looking at anything else other than that's it. Can I ask you that, this, the reserve fund, how much is the reserve fund supposed to be and how much over the reserve fund do we have where our limit is?
Seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, but I'm saying.
That's what it says in here.
It's, there's a page in the budget book.
It doesn't matter. I can't, budget books just.
That's what I said, right, Chris? Am I quoting that right?
There's, there's a page in the.
It says seven hundred and fifty thousand.
There's, yes, there's a page in the budget book. So for honest, what we're talking about here is just the unassigned fund balance reserve for the general fund. We are at twenty-one point six percent at the end of fiscal year fourteen.
Okay.
GFOA is sixteen point seven.
Okay, that's what I needed to know.
Our policy that was done thirty-some years ago is ten percent.
Right.
Well, and what you just gave the council was the percentage for FY fourteen.
Correct.
Right.
The relevant figure is where are you going to be at FY sixteen?
Yeah.
And do you have a plan to get yourself off the use of fund balance? That's the critical question, I think, when you talk about using reserves.
But will we be holding at sixteen? Sixteen is where we should be holding.
We'd be holding, we, we would be holding in that if we don't make major changes after seventeen, at least under the thing I put forward, if the tax base doesn't go up.
Right.
We've got to do something else.
We, we've got to do something else.
Yeah.
But we've got to do something else.
No, no, I'm clear with you.
Uh, I'm saying get through this without sending a message that their answer is always raising taxes. That's what I'm saying.
I just needed to know about the reserve fund because I knew that the, the part was with sixteen.
The other thing finance will need to know, if, if you're saying GFOA is your floor and you take it to the GFOA figure, you don't have a reserve unless you're willing to go below the, the GFOA figure. That's part of the plan.
But that's why I split it, you know? I, I did propose using that this year, next year. But I said, if we don't have a fiscal crisis now, I, I don't know.
I do appreciate the very helpful information sent on March thirty-first.
Thanks, Michelle.
About the current tax rates and what the effective annual impact on property owners of a tax rate increase would be. If you own a two hundred thousand dollar house and the tax rate was increased five cents, you're looking at a hundred dollars in the year. So I just think that brings some perspective into what we're talking about. I understand, you know, about messages we send and all of that, but really our budget is about our values, our priorities and our vision. And I think we have to keep that in mind too as we proceed with this conversation.
My feel from this council is I would stop even talking about a five cent tax increase because I don't think there's going to be a five cent tax increase.
Well, that's what I gather. I just wanted to throw that out there as a closer.
Okay.
So we'll adjourn our work session now and reconvene in about an hour. Thank you.